... Planning Commission for October 1st, 2015 to order. Can I get a roll call of the members, please?
Doric Bowden. Scott Ohm.
Here.
Emery Dorsey. Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Pam Olson.
Here.
Alan Bucknam is absent. Steve Timms is absent. And Amanda Weaver is absent.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Can I get a second?
Aye. Okay, I'll second that.
Can I get a vote?
Motion carried. Five to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for September 17th, 2015?
I'll second that motion.
She said September 16th, is it?
Is that right?
It's supposed to be 17th.
Seventeenth, then.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on that? Can we get a vote?
Motion carried. Four yes and one abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody signed up for something that's not on?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number WZ-15-05. An application filed by Lloyd Anastasi for approval of zone change from residential to R2 agriculture 1A1 neighborhood commercial and planned commercial development to mixed use commercial for property located at 4600 Kipling Street.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And I am presenting case number WZ-15-05, which is a request for approval of a zone change from R2 A1 NC planned commercial development to mixed use commercial at 4600 Kipling. The property is roughly 12 and a half acres in size. And the comprehensive plan designates primary commercial corridor and mixed use commercial. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the case file and packet materials, the zoning ordinance, and the contents of this digital presentation.
So noted.
The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge and all noticing and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So this is an aerial photo of the property, which is outlined in red. North is to the top. And you can see that Kipling runs down the western perimeter with 44th Avenue on the south side. So the zone change is the first step in the process for approval of a redevelopment of the site under the MUC zoning. And as typical with zone changes, Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council, who is the final authority. The purpose of the rezoning is to modify the list of uses and to simplify the review and approval for future development on the property. So again, the property is located at the northeast corner of 44th and Kipling. It does include four parcels, each with a different zone designation on it. And again, R2, A1, NC, and planned commercial development. They are under single ownership and are about 12 and a half acres in size. The hard corner, right at the intersection of 44th and Kipling, is not included with the zone change request. That is currently a fueling station with convenience store. This is the same 2014 aerial image designating the zoning. Again, the property is outlined in red with north to the top. 44th Avenue runs along the south side with Kipling Street over on the west. And again, you can see sort of the patchwork quilt that is the zoning, not only on the property, but in the area. Again, R2 on the very south portion, a strip of A1, a piece of NC, another piece of A1, and then also PCD. The different colors, of course, on this map represent the different zonings in the area. Generally, to the east of the property is R2 zoning with the Pennington Elementary School. To the northeast and the east is some planned commercial development with some C1. It includes an RV sales and storage facility. And then to the north is a hotel site. On the western side of Kipling, again, are a variety of land uses and zoning. We've got a couple fairly large apartment complexes with multifamily designations, kind of a smattering of neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, and then C1. And those would include an attorney's office and a church at the very... Pardon me? Speak up? Okay, sorry about that. At the very northwest corner of the intersection, sorry. On the south side of 44th, again, is a smattering of various commercial uses with some service office and retail, primarily Zone C1. The property is flat with about a four-foot grade change from the west to the east. And there are various mature trees on the property. They do appear to be elms and cottonwood. And you'll see those in the slides, which I'm showing next. So this is standing at the intersection of 44th and Kipling, looking north on Kipling. And again, on the right side of the image is that existing fueling station and convenience store. This is another view of that, just looking the other way on the south side of 44th Avenue. And now, we're looking north. You can see there's not much out there, just a vast field. You can see some structures in the background. I believe these are some of the campers on the adjacent RV lot. It looks like Pennington Elementary School at this location. Looking west, back towards the Kipling and 44th Avenue intersection. And this slide was taken from 44th... Excuse me, from Kipling. Now I'm looking east. You can see Pennington Elementary in the background. This is some of the RV storage. And again, looking east from Kipling. This is a survey of the property. It currently is vacant. And again, you can see the different parcels that comprise sort of the overall conglomeration. The purpose of the MUC Zone District is to create a flexible approach to land uses and to enhance the character of the city's commercial areas by promoting development, accommodating a mix of land uses, which is more urban in character, and is more pedestrian-friendly. Again, we've got four zonings on the property, which allow for a wide range of uses. R2 is really a low-density residential zone. The ag zoning is an agricultural type of zone, kind of a leftover from the historic Jefferson County farming operations that occurred on the west side of the city. The NC Zone District is the city's most restrictive. And then the PCD allows generally commercial one uses. So I tried to put together a little chart... That compared a couple of the zonings on the property with the proposed mixed-use commercial. So I took the most restrictive, which is the R2. I took the least restrictive on the property, which is PCD. And then I compared it with the MUC zoning. In the chart, you can see that the R2 allows single and two-family residential, the PCD commercial uses, which are pretty similar to the intensity allowed by the mixed-use commercial. In the R1 zoning, there are no commercial standards. In the PCD, they would have to follow the requirements of the Architectural and Site Design Manual. And under the MUC zoning, they would have to follow the standards in the mixed-use zoning, which is very similar to the ASDM. I looked at lot coverage, 40%, 40% by buildings, 80% in the MUC by buildings and paving, landscaping, a minimum 10% in the PCD. And then, under the MUC, 10% for mixed use, 15% single use. I did make a mistake in the staff report that was pointed out by Commissioner Ohm with regard to the height allowances. Under R2, there's a 35-foot height restriction. Under the PCD, it's 50 feet. And in the MUC, generally, for a mixed-use building, it could go up to six stories. However, a single use could be four stories, except in urban renewal areas where there are no height and density limitations. And I thank you for correcting me on that, Mr. Ohm. This is a copy of the I-70 in Kipling Urban Renewal Area that was adopted, I want to say, back in the late 2000s, 2010 or so, 2009. And it outlines the area where this urban renewal plan is in place. The striped areas are the locations where property is exempt from the height limitations and the density standards. And you can see the parcel, I've showed it with the arrow, that is included within that. So the property would be exempt from height and density. Now, the process for the zone change, as commissioners know, we have a requirement for a neighborhood meeting. We had one on October 28th, 2014. We had 20 to 25 folks show up. Folks were generally supportive of the rezoning and the reinvestment. We did have a woman who lived on Independence, who was worried about her view being ruined and the traffic that might be generated. But generally, the group was supportive of the application. With regard to the public hearing noticing, I received three phone calls, just questioning what the application was about. We did not receive any letters. We went through our standard referral process, and we had no concerns from city departments or agencies. And there will be subsequent referrals for the next steps in the process. Now, if the zone change is approved, the next steps for development would be approval of a concept plan, because it's over 10 acres. There is a neighborhood meeting required for that and a 10-day comment period, but it is reviewed administratively. The next step, and I would point out that the concept plan is sort of... It's... I want to call it about the plan, where you show access points and maybe building locations, but not a lot of detail. The second step of the approval process is the specific development plan, which shows the more detailed site plan with a landscape plan, a photometric plan, all the architectural elevations and so on. That is also reviewed administratively. I would suspect that there will be a plat required to consolidate the properties. That is a public hearing process. Once all those steps are complete, then it can go to building permit application. So, as the commission is aware, we do have specific zone change criteria that we use when we do an evaluation of a land use application. I have detailed those in your packet, but I want to focus on a couple of those. The first one being consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is an excerpt from Envision Wheat Ridge, which is the city comprehensive plan. The property... The plan does identify Kipling as a primary commercial corridor, and it's high on the city's list of redevelopment priorities. The intent of that particular... Oh, excuse me. The other designation is as mixed-use commercial. And the goals and policies for that are to allow for appropriate higher-density taller buildings and high-quality design. And the goals met in the comprehensive plan include the redevelopment and reinvestment of underutilized commercial areas with denser, high-quality development. The second piece I wanted to talk about, just briefly, are the changing conditions along the Kipling corridor. Kipling is a state highway and is classified as a principal arterial. It carries over 40,000 cars per day. As such, staff does not believe that it's desirable for low-density development with some of those existing zonings on the property. We are continuing to see commercial development along Kipling intensify and have seen some new redevelopment and reinvestment in tired, outdated structures. We have several new buildings that we can brag about. The first is the Green Herb Building, which is located across the street from this. And it is an herbal supplement distributor. At 49th and Kipling, we have the new Natural Grocers, which was completed earlier this year. And then down at 38th and Kipling, we've got the Kipling Ridge Development, which includes the Sprouts, the new drive-through Starbucks, and an elderly housing component. We have concluded, therefore, that all of the proposed list is consistent with those two pieces of the plan. The other thing that I'd like to point out is the city is in the process of installing a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail from 32nd Avenue up through 44th Avenue. When this property develops, they will be expected to extend that trail from 44th North to the northern perimeter of the property. And therefore, it would support the goal of increased pedestrian and bicycle connections, also identified in all of our supporting documents. Finally, we've concluded that the zone change will consolidate the zoning on the property and prepare it for redevelopment. It also could act as a catalyst for additional redevelopment of property and investment in the area. So with that, staff is giving a recommendation of approval. We've concluded that the zone change will promote the public health, safety, and welfare. We've concluded that the request is consistent with goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. We've concluded that the zone change will consolidate the zoning, prepare it for redevelopment, and may be a catalyst for other improvements or investments in the area. And finally, that the criteria used to evaluate a zone change request do support this application. And that concludes the staff comments. I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Record. Let's see if the commissioners have any questions, starting with Commissioner Bowden.
Yeah, could you elaborate a little bit? In the notes for the neighborhood meeting, it states that it's doubtful that the structures on the property will exceed two to three stories because there isn't enough land area. To me, 12.4 acres seems like, even though it's kind of got jagged boundaries.
Right. Well, some of the concern from... That was expressed at the neighborhood meeting, particularly from some of... Particularly the residential properties along Independence were the issue of obstructing views. The zoning and then on top of it, the urban renewal area do have no limitation on height or density. But the thing to keep in mind is that the higher, the taller the buildings, the more parking you need. And I wouldn't anticipate that we would see structured parking at this location as far as the expense that it takes to build that. So again, the taller the buildings, the more parking is needed. And remember, you still have to meet landscaping coverage. So I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Bowden, but...
Sure, sure. And also, with such close proximity to the school, was there any representation at that neighborhood meeting from School Fishes? Or was there any voiced concern from the school?
No.
Okay.
I have no comments. Any questions? I don't think I have any questions at this time either. I think you've answered what I had. Does the applicant wish to have a presentation? Please state your...
The answer to your question is yes and no.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Pharoah. I'm a land planning consultant. My office at 7777 South Pugh Street in Littleton.
Thank you.
I'm here representing Mr. Lloyd Anastasi and his ownership group. They are based in Redondo, California, Redondo Beach. How they came to have this, I believe, is a bit of a lesson in ownership's failed processes, development plans, whatever. And they've ended up with 12 and a half acres here with four zones, and it's a bit of a mess. Meredith has done her usual fine job of giving the overview of this. One thing I would add is that not only do we have four zones, which make reasonable development of this property virtually impossible based on market requirements, but the property also has unique vehicular access parameters to go with it. We have met with CDOT, because Kipling, of course, is their road. We've also met with your engineers here. This property will be accessed by a full movement intersection on the south opposite the existing Jealouson Street.
Okay. Is that better? CDOT will allow, and this is based on a meeting we had with them, CDOT will allow one full movement access point on Kipling and two right-in, right-outs, based on what they know today. Having said that, that, at least from my standpoint as a land planner, starts to provide the ability to have internal circulation for however this property would be developed. And the combination, then, of a uniform zone category and a uniform method of accessing the development areas means that this property can move forward in the development process, and we believe that will happen. It is the objectives of this ownership group to sell this parcel to local developers for development. And as much as I would like to tell you how this is going to develop and how it's going to develop and what that's going to be, that will be a next step, probably done by others as it is laid out today. We're trying to move this property along in a manageable manner so that we can make something happen on this site. That's what we're here to do. So if there are any other questions you would have for me, I'd be glad to take a stab.
Joining the commissioners, thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Bowden? Commissioner Dorsey?
No.
I have one question. So really, the basis for the change of zoning is to market the property?
Yes, yes. This group, again, they're based in Redondo Beach, California. They're not local. This is not a piece of land for them to develop. They will likely sell this to somebody more local to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, no. I have no questions. Thank you. I would like now open up the citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak? Oh, okay. Looks like there's Jim Richards signed up. Did you want to...
Across the street, at the church, and I just came here for information.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public forum. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner, I'd like to move to approve this case number WZ-15-05, a request for approval of a zone change from residential to R2 agriculture 1A1 neighborhood commercial NC and planned commercial development, PCD, to mixed-use commercial, MUC, for property located at 4600 Kipling Street for the following reasons. The proposed zone change will promote the health... Public health, safety, or welfare of the community. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. The zone change will consolidate zoning on the property, prepare it for redevelopment, and may serve as a catalyst for other property redevelopment or improvements in the area. And the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Motion carried. Five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to move on to the next case number. Open the public hearing for case number WZ-15-07, an application filed by Reed King Medical Development for approval of a zone change from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial for property located at 3790 Wadsworth Boulevard. And ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ohm. My name is Lauren McLaughlin, for the record. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting tonight's case, WZ-15-07. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and the commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case.
So noted, thank you.
So we'll start with an aerial of the subject property. The site is outlined here in bright blue. It's in the eastern half of the city at the southeast corner of Wadsworth and 38th Avenue. In this case, the site is just a single parcel, total size of which is just under an acre at 41,600 square feet. The property was originally developed in 1989, and it has served as a gas station since that time. Currently, it's a Shell gas station, and you can see two white fueling canopies, north and south, flanking the existing convenience store with that darker-colored roof. There's also a car wash on the eastern side of the property. This is an excerpt from the city's zoning map. The current zoning on the property is mixed-use neighborhood. It's MUN, and it's designated by that darker blue color. But it's surrounded by a variety of different land uses, relatively consistent zoning in this area. Three of the four corners at this intersection are zoned mixed-use commercial. It's MUC, shown by that lighter blue color. In that zone district to the north, you have the Safeway Shopping Center in this quadrant with some of the outlots, Burger King, Chase Bank, Boston Market, and the grocery store in the back. Catty Corner is the Wilmore Center in this area with a outlawed at Midas here on the hard corner. Across Wadsworth, a larger property under contract right now by a single developer. The current... It's in the process of being reviewed for redevelopment. It's the vacant Ford site. And then in the same corner as the subject site, the adjacent uses are less regional in nature. We've got a Methodist church that's also zoned MUN to the east, and then three smaller lots to the south, a single-family home zoned restricted commercial, and two smaller commercial uses in the NC and RC zone districts. I think most folks are pretty familiar with this intersection. It's one of the major intersections in the city, but I do have a couple of pictures. This one is standing on 38th Avenue, looking west towards Wadsworth. So you can see the existing fueling canopy that's on the north side of the site, the flesh shelter here that's just adjacent to the attached sidewalk. And this panoramic probably does a better job of showing the full extent of the property. So this is standing in the intersection of 38th and Wadsworth, looking southeast. You can see the limits of the property are this white fence here to the east and this tan fence here to the south. The current development on the site, as I mentioned, being from the 1980s, is considered legally non-conforming. It doesn't meet any of today's standards relative to site design, architecture, landscaping, or signage. Site's really pretty unchanged since it was developed over 25 years ago. So I want to talk just for a minute. This application is a request for a zone change from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial. And as I mentioned earlier, it's the only corner of this intersection that's not already zoned MUC. And there's a reason that that came to be. The mixed-use zone districts came into the city code in 2010, and for about a year, those zoning districts existed on paper, but there were no properties in the city that were zoned mixed-use. In 2011, the community decided to have a city-initiated zone change of the Wadsworth corridor to better align the zoning along the corridor with the city's goals for a mixed-use town center. There was a public process for a city-initiated zone change, and property owners were allowed to opt out, although very few did. to opt out, although very few did. In order to establish the boundary for that city-initiated zone change, we use the boundary of the existing urban renewal areas along the corridor, and that is what the white line is designating, those URA boundaries. You can see that that white line boundary aligns almost exactly with the light blue MUC zoning designation. And you can also see that the subject site, still highlighted in bright blue, is outside of that urban renewal area and is pretty much the major reason why the site is the only at the intersection that's not zoned MUC. About a year later, we took a look at the 38th Avenue corridor, and it was legislatively rezoned to the mixed-use neighborhood zone district. As you can see in this case, the zoning extends a little bit beyond the boundary of that urban renewal area, again shown by the white line. The subject site is part of the 38th Avenue urban renewal area and was therefore rezoned to MUN. I think in hindsight, it may have been appropriate to more closely look at this intersection, given the adjacency to Wadsworth, but the URA boundaries were really the logical starting point at that time. So staff is supportive of this zone change for the site in large part because MUC is a more appropriate zoning for this location adjacent to Wadsworth and for a site of this size at one acre. It's certainly one of the larger sites on 38th Avenue in this area. But we'll look at the development standards here for the proposed and existing zone districts. These would apply if the site were to be redeveloped by the applicant or any other entity in the future. In this case, the applicant is specifically seeking the zone change because they'd like to redevelop the property for a freestanding emergency room. That is a newer land use that is trending in the Denver area, and because it's a newer type of land use, it's not specifically enumerated in the city's use charts. So we, in that case where we don't have a line item that says freestanding emergency room, we look at what similar uses we have. Medical office and hospital are the only two medical-related land uses that could be considered similar. Medical office is allowed in the current zoning, MUN, but both hospital and medical office are allowed in MUC. So staff has determined that a rezone is appropriate, not only given the location of the site, but also necessary to accommodate this proposed future use. So that is what's written in that first table. The uses, the two major differences between MUN and MUC are, in fact, the land uses that are permitted and the build-to areas, which differ by about eight feet. The setbacks, lot coverage, landscape, and architectural requirements are all the same in both zone districts. Building height and density are actually both the same as well. As Meredith alluded to in the previous presentation, there are maximum heights and densities established by the city charter. Because this particular site is outside of an exempted area, those charter caps apply, so 35 feet maximum height if it's a residential use, and 50 feet for any other use, 21 units per acre. The process for any zone change does require a neighborhood meeting, and this, in this case, it was held in August. Two neighbors attended, two adjacent property owners, commercial property owners. They both expressed support for the rezoning and for reinvestment in the gas station property. During our public posting period, we had two, a comment letter and an inquiry. One was the letter that I distributed to commissioners prior to this meeting. It came in today, so it wasn't included in the agenda packet. It's from Lutheran Medical Center. Doesn't specifically address the zone change, but does indicate their objections to the proposed land use. Staff received another inquiry regarding whether or not a helicopter landing pad would be permitted on this site, and I just want to clarify that it's not permitted in any of our straight zone districts. We don't have any air-related land uses. You'd have to be in a planned development to accommodate something like that. As well, as part of this process, during, we sent the application out on referral to our standard utility providers and city departments. There are no concerns expressed regarding the rezoning. If the zone change was approved and the applicant or somebody in the future were to move forward with development, a new referral would take place with the site plan set. Consideration of specific end uses, in this case, a proposed emergency room, are really not the purview of the zone change analysis, and that's why there's no additional information included in this application. What we do look at as part of the zone change are several criteria to look more generally at the suitability of this zone district in this location of the city. As commission is aware, there's several criteria that we use to evaluate these types of requests. The first two are criteria that all zone changes must address, and in this case, staff feels that the MUC zoning on the site meets these criteria, namely that there's no adverse effect created by MUC zoning on the surrounding area, which is already largely zoned, mixed-use commercial. And secondly, that there is adequate infrastructure in place to accommodate an MUC zoning designation. The next set of criteria, a zone change application must meet at least one of these criteria. In this case, the zoning is not addressing a mapping area, change in character, or need that was previously not considered. The primary reason for supporting the zone change is its conformance with the policies and goals in the city's comprehensive plan. And that image that you see to the right is an excerpt from the city's comprehensive plan. The site, again, just to orient you, is outlined in blue. Wadsworth Boulevard is shown with this large red bubble line. 44th Avenue is at the north at the top of the screen. 38th Avenue here is designated as a main street. 38th and 44th are both neighborhood commercial corridors, lower-intensity commercial areas that promote opportunities for small and specialty businesses. They're areas where the MUN zoning is entirely appropriate. Wadsworth, however, is designated as a primary commercial corridor. It's a designation that promotes a much wider range of commercial, residential, and civic activities, and that is more consistent with the wider range of uses permitted in the MUC zoning. It's a corridor that we know is more auto-oriented and includes businesses and services with a more regional draw. So we do feel like a rezone to MUC is appropriate for this site and in this location relative to the comprehensive plan designations. And ultimately, for that reason, staff is recommending approval of this request. As I mentioned, it will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. It's in conformance with the comprehensive plan compatible with the surrounding area, also zoned MUC, and is supported by the zone change criteria. So I would be happy to answer any of your questions. We also have the applicant in the audience.
Thank you for the presentation. Do the commissioners have questions? Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Commissioner Dorsey?
The reason for the change is from an MUC to an MUC from an MUN is a little broader definition that you can have a hospital or that type of facility on this piece of ground. That's the main reason. Because the whole 38th Avenue corridor there is MUN.
Correct.
And it's MUN right up to Wadsworth all the way down to Sheridan. So it's the other sides of the street that have been developed into MUC.
Right.
Okay. That's just what I was asking.
Yep. MUN would allow for a medical office building, but we think of that as something that's more limited in its hours of operations and is, you know, eight to six-ish dentist, your primary care physician. Something that extends in operation towards a 24-hour use is something that we tend to see on our primary commercial corridors. And in this case, because again, a freestanding emergency room isn't enumerated, we thought it had the characteristics, shared characteristics of both a medical office and a hospital, and therefore needs to be in a zone district that considers both of those two uses.
Okay. Commissioner Kimzey?
I'm not sure, Lauren, how to phrase this, but I have a similar question to Emery's. It looks like the most of the adjacent zoning is MUN with two or three parcels, I can't tell from this partial map, three, I guess, that are similar to the last case where we have some RC, restricted commercial, and something else. If the main purpose is to allow this specific use, I wonder whether the adjacency to the church and these smaller commercial buildings is appropriate for such a high use? That's my only question.
Sure. So obviously, at any point when you have two zone districts come up against each other, you can see in this map, a lot of the properties along Wadsworth are zoned MUC and abut immediately to lower-density residential neighbors. So we, you know, the code takes into account some of those transition areas, where you need landscape buffering, where you need to have your parking. Buildings are required to be built closer to the street, so they tend not to be immediately adjacent to neighboring properties. You know, in this case, the site is surrounded on two sides and across the intersection by the MUC. It's an acre in size, and it's got over 200 feet of frontage on Wadsworth. And so it's a property that, you know, most of the properties along Wadsworth would be eligible candidates to be rezoned to mixed-use commercial just by virtue of their proximity to that kind of a corridor. The hospital use, I should mention, is if we, you know, a zone change, we're looking sort of globally at whether the zoning is appropriate in this area, and we're not focusing as much on the operations and sort of potential future end use. If this was rezoned and the applicants walked away, it could be any of the permitted uses in the MUC zoning.
Okay.
If they move forward with their application, hospital is considered a conditional use because a traditional hospital comes with all of those potential impacts. And so we would be looking at a set of criteria administratively, but still an extra layer of review to confirm that the functions of that particular business are appropriate given the neighbors. So there'd be an additional layer of review to confirm that there's no major impact so that they're being mitigated as much as possible.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
No questions. I have some questions. So the, my understanding is that the, the city initiated a voter-approved exemption from the height and density, and I don't quite understand the reasons why that, why that property was left out. And I'm not sure, you know, if had it been put in, would it have changed anything for voter approval? I don't know. I don't know that that would have been the breaking point. But for whatever reason, the city decided not to include that. My, kind of my question is, just kind of thinking about like the zoning. So if this were, so in the mixed-use commercial, you show that development standards, and for mixed-use commercial, it's not 35 feet height and 50 foot. That's not, that's not the maximum building heights for mixed-use commercial. The mixed-use commercial is, my understanding is it's six stories if it's mixed-use and four stories if it's single-use. And so how, how do you, where does that information go? Because this is a, would this be a non-conforming mixed-use commercial zoning? Because, because the city charter says that you can't, you can't do that. You can't build that height. So would this be a non-conforming zoning that we'd be creating?
No. It's a good observation. So there's two, two code sections that apply in this situation. I believe you're referring to the 2008 or 2009 vote citywide where we exempted two geographic areas of the community from the city charter height maximum of 50 and 35. Those were approved for the, in this case, the Wadsworth urban renewal area was the logical boundary, and so that's that white area. The mixed-use zoning creates its own, it's very unusual for a charter to dictate height maximums. So in the mixed-use zoning, we've created different height standards that you mentioned, four and six stories. However, there's a clause, two sentences, under that table that says wherever this conflicts with the city charter, the city charter trumps the mixed-use zoning. And the conflict in this point, in this instance, would be that the property sits outside of the geographic limits of that exemption, and therefore the city charter trumps the zoning, and that's how we end up with 35 and 50 as the height maximum. So there's essentially two, two height maximum standards that would exist for any mixed-use zone property, and we just have to identify whether it's in or out of those boundaries to identify which set of standards applies. Does that clarify?
Yeah, I think that, I think that kind of helps clarify. So, I mean, is there anything special that would go, I guess, on the plat that would, that would say there's a restriction or?
No, it's, it's pretty well-covered in the zoning code. It's, you know, it's one, it's our job to make sure that we're interpreting the code correctly. It wouldn't need an additional plat note. If the city charter ever changed, it'd be the zoning that trumps.
Right.
So we wouldn't want to add a third sort of standard.
Okay. I think that's the only question I have. Is there any other questions, commissioners? Thank you. Does the applicant, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Blake Probst. I'm with Reed King Commercial Real Estate Development or Medical Development. I am based in Houston, Texas. We are currently working with a client to provide alternate care for individuals, to provide alternate care for individuals in the state of Colorado. We are seeking this rezoning application because we feel as though that during our neighborhood meeting, whenever we met, there were R2, the adjacent landowners to the south on Wadsworth, were actually in favor of the rezone. Those are the ones that are most affected by this rezone, from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial. We also feel as though that it works with the Wadsworth development corridor in the sense that it continues that piece down and it abuts the, the majority of the property butts that right away as opposed to 38th.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Commissioner Dorsey?
No.
Commissioner Kimzey?
No.
Commissioner Olson? I have no questions. Thank you. I would now like to open up the citizens' forum. Are there any citizens signed up for this case? Thank you. Oh, which, which one? Oh, he just spoke. Did Matthew wish to speak? Ben White has signed up to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, Ben White. Yeah, please. Yeah, please. Oh, well, you guys can have five minutes each, so. Next one, the next one is Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. Please, please, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Even if you're not signed up on the list, you can certainly come up to the podium and talk to you.
My name is Jennifer Rona, and I am the vice president of business development for Lutheran Medical Center. And my address is 8300 West 38th Street at Lutheran Medical Center. And I am here, I'm actually here proudly representing Lutheran Medical Center as the hospital that's been in the community for over, well, actually, this year was our 110th anniversary serving the Wheat Ridge community. And we became aware of the Neighborhood Urgent Care Center when we actually had our first meeting with them, where they came in from Texas to share a little bit about their organization and let us know that it actually was not an urgent care center. It was a freestanding ED at that time, and they were looking for our support and our partnership. And as we did a little bit more research after we left, we did reach out to the city manager and the mayor and learned that the property was being presented as an urgent care center, which significantly impacts the type of care that's provided to patients in the community. The location of this freestanding emergency department is within five blocks of a fully acute care hospital with an emergency department that sees over 75,000 visits a year for patients in our community and surrounding local communities. Our concern about the location is twofold. One is being the provider of choice for so long in the community, what is the impact to patient care? Oftentimes, people see the freestanding centers as urgent care, which provide lower acuity and are lower cost. and are a lower cost option. And in this particular case, as an emergency department, they would have the same or be at the same level of the fee schedule of a hospital, an acute care hospital similar to Lutheran Medical Center. So the costs that they would pay to receive care at these facilities would be similar to the costs that they would pay at a full stand, at a full acute care hospital. The detriment to our community is that patients oftentimes received delay in care that they need, that they can only receive at a full, fully acute care hospital emergency department. An example of that is in our local community, there is another freestanding emergency department called First Choice that is in Arvada. And they, we went into a transfer agreement with them to ensure that patients got the most appropriate care. They came into the community about four years ago and in the last year, we've seen 130 patients transfer from that facility because they were suffering some type of condition that could not be cared for. In conditions like stroke or chest pain where time is of the essence in terms of the outcome of the patient's treatment, that really delays the patient's care a minimum of 30 minutes and sometimes even longer. And then lastly, before I let my colleague, Dr. Jeff Beckman speak, the other thing that I would emphasize is the community care, freestanding emergency departments typically do not provide care to the entire community. They don't see patients that are Medicaid patients. They have a different payer mix. So Lutheran Medical Center who provides care to the entire community regardless of their ability to pay really has, it's really significantly impacts how that care is provided. And so using the freestanding emergency department that's within five miles of the hospital, notwithstanding those 130 visits that were transferred for a specific care reason, there are numerous other patients that went to that facility to receive some level of care but were denied care because they didn't have the ability to pay for that care at the time of service. So in conclusion, I would just, we are happy to partner with any healthcare facility that comes in the organization as long as we see there being a full benefit to the community that's not currently provided by Lutheran Medical Center. And we don't believe that having a second freestanding emergency department within a five-mile radius, let alone within three blocks of a fully acute care medical center and emergency department with fellowship-trained physicians and the full suite of services that patients need in order to get diagnosed and treated well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I have two other people signed up. Jackie Weinhold, did you want to come up to speak?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all for letting me speak. My name is Dr. Jeff Beckman. I'm a residency-trained emergency physician at Lutheran Medical Center and also medical director of Arvada Fire Department and Wheat Ridge Fire Department here.
Could you please state your address?
Is 2074 Foothills Drive South and that's in Golden. Okay. So Jennifer explained most of the, the major details and so I won't rehash that for you guys. I know it's been a long night. My biggest concern from a patient care perspective and physician care perspective is just the overall health and safety of the community. Now, I did note on that document that as far as one of the zoning criteria is promoting health and safety. And a freestanding emergency department, just a couple blocks down from a full-service hospital with emergency department, I don't think is in the best interest of the community and I don't think it promotes health and safety. It has nothing to do with the physicians who will eventually practice there. It's just that I think overall, what I've seen in Arvada is that people don't understand the difference between a freestanding emergency department and a hospital. And so folks that have symptoms of heart attack, that have symptoms of stroke, will go to these facilities and expect to get the same level of care. They just, they know the difference between an emergency department and an urgent care. But an emergency department in a hospital that are freestanding is, is a very difficult, complex thing for ordinary people to understand. And when they go to these facilities for those symptoms of an acute heart attack or stroke, then 100% of the time, they will need to be transferred out. And we all know that heart attack and stroke, we're talking very time-dependent type things where time is disability, morbidity, and potentially mortality of those patients by prolonging that time where if they would have gone to the full-service hospital, they could have gotten that specialized cardiac care and neurologic care that that hospital has. My other concern just about the location is that there are signs on the major interways into this area for a hospital. And so patients that are driving, although they should be using 911, but we know a lot of patients, if they're close, they may not choose to call 911 and drive directly to the facility, will see that hospital sign and for that concern of stroke or heart attack. And instead of going to Lutheran, they'll see that, oh, here, the hospital is right here. It says emergency department. And then those patients will drive right there instead of knowing to go down just a couple blocks to where the full-service hospital is. So those would be my major concerns with where it's located and the level of service. Certainly if it were an urgent care, I wouldn't have any issues with that at all. But I think the emergency department sends some mixed messages to the community and can potentially adversely affect the, the health and safety of the community and delay of those time-dependent conditions. So, and my statement.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that want to come up and, please come forward? State your name and your address, please.
Becky, my name's Dave Mitchell, EMS chief for the Arvada Fire Protection District. My address, 9958 Dodge Drive, Fort Clinton. I'm here tonight in support of Lutheran Hospital's concerns. I don't have much to say about the zoning change, but I feel like the land use change is something I just wanted to take one second and urge the commission to consider what's going on around the state. There's a article in Denver Post a week ago regarding proliferation of standalone ERs across the metro area and some of the concerns related to that. And I feel as the person responsible for the paramedics and provision of EMS services for the city of Arvada and to a certain extent in cooperation with rural metro ambulance and portion of the city of Wheat Ridge, that if I didn't take the opportunity to speak my mind about that current situation regarding the help, to the building of all these standalone ERs, I would be ridiculous. I want to take just one moment and say that it, it seems as though Colorado's, the state of Colorado's lack of a certificate of need program regarding new healthcare facilities is enticing to providers from other states that are coming in to take advantage of that. The newspaper article says that over the course of the last few years, 20 new standalone ERs have gone up in high-income residential neighborhoods around the city with more on the way. And I just feel like there's something that doesn't seem conducive to a long-term sustainable healthcare model there and I just wanted to take a moment to express that to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to come up and speak?
Since we, since we were discussing.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Beverly White. My address is 3375 Flower. I am both a Wheat Ridge resident and also the director of the emergency department at Lutheran Medical Center. And I would probably echo the comments that were made by my colleagues there. The other thing I would ask the commission to really consider is looking at the size of the lot for the use that's recommended. One acre is a pretty small amount of land and looking at this for a medical care, you need to look at the parking. You know, ideally, if this is going to be a freestanding ER, you would expect ambulances to be able to pull into that area. And I, I would probably just encourage a look at the space that's allocated at Lutheran for ambulances and how much is needed to make the care that's provided there and then look at the one-acre spot that's here. And I was also saying that from a community perspective, I take calls almost daily from patients and when you're looking at the fees that are charged at a freestanding being the same as a full-service ED, we have a very difficult time explaining our fees in the full-service ER where we're talking about using a lot of subspecialist and other specialized services. I can only imagine for our community members who go into that area, the difficulty in explaining that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Seeing none, I will close the.
The applicant can respond.
What's that?
The applicant's allowed to respond.
Yes, please come up.
Because our, the original intention was to discuss.
Just, just wait till you get to the podium, sir. Thank you.
So the original intention here was to discuss the rezoning of the hardcore. It was not to discuss the actual use. However, we did receive, you guys did receive this letter late this afternoon at 1:00 and we actually wanted to address some of those concerns in regards to some of the causes that brought up today. Denver is a market that is seeing an increase in FSEDs. FSEDs are providing patients with alternate choice to traditional healthcare, hospital-based emergency care. Patients will not be able to decide where they will be able to receive their care and the existing FSEDs are seeing increased volumes because of the expedient quality care that is delivered in a calming, comfortable environment, affordable, affording the patient with a better experience. You know, what we've heard to date is we're talking about clinical and treatment limitations. The freestanding EDs for MUC or neighbors emergency care offer a full x-ray, CT, ultrasound, lab and pharmacy on suite. We all have, every physician is a board-certified emergency physician as well as the nurses and have treated the most minor to the most major presenting complaints as far as chest pain, abdominal pain, stroke and gunshot wounds and have all been patients in neighbors ER and have been successfully treated often quicker and with better outcomes than traditional hospitals. You know, there's a concern that was brought up in regards to a higher cost of care in these centers. Our charges are comparable to, to a traditional emergency center across the country as well as Lutheran. And the, there was, there was some concern, the letter was talking about a requirement of payment upfront. MUC never requires payment upfront before evaluating, being evaluated by a physician. Our patients are seen without regard to their ability to pay. And redirecting patients with less ability to pay, every patient presented to neighbors requesting emergency care is provided with a medical screening exam to ensure there's no life-threatening emergency. Patients should choose where they receive their healthcare ultimately. And local hospitals enter a transfer agreement to ensure that the vast, efficient, quality care is available to patients with FSEDs unable to provide necessary level of care. Transfer agreements are entered into to secure ongoing inpatient care. So the 130 visits that they're talking about has to do with inpatient care. Somebody who's come to the, to the freestanding facility who did not realize that they ultimately need to be admitted into the hospital. So with that said, one of the big issues they talked about, delayed time to treatment by transfer. FSEDs offer a metric that is comparable, if not better, to hospitals. The lab turnaround in FSED is eight minutes. Now, hospital's 59 minutes. Imaging with complete reading is 37 minutes in FSED and 137 minutes in a traditional hospital. Non-contrast CT is 29 minutes for an FSED and 60 minutes for a hospital. Code neuro CT is 15 minutes whereas a hospital's 18 minutes. Door to doc for an FSED is 8.3 minutes. On a traditional ER, it is 55 minutes. Total admit, total time, turnaround time, whenever you're coming into a facility is 43 minutes for an FSED versus 2.3 hours in a traditional hospital. So there's, there's talking here about increased transportation costs as far as, we're talking about here as far as transporting patients from the FSED to the, to the hospital. And the increased transportation costs potentially occurring to ER charges, only patients needing inpatient admission or transfer. Transportation costs are neutral. There are never two ER bills unless the hospital transfer to, transfer insists the patient is seen in ER before admission. Hospitals frequently do this to capture the ER charge as well as the inpatient revenue. And then we brought up Medicare and Medicaid are frequently not accepted. That was their rebuttal. All patients presenting, presented with a medical emergency provided with an evaluation, if an emergency exists, treatment is provided. For billing purposes, CMS has not provided FSEDs with the billing codes for reimbursement and does not factor into our delivery of care. In true emergencies such as a heart attack or stroke, freestanding ERs do not have, this is what they're saying, they do not have onsite physician specialists to treat these complex patients. Heart attack and stroke patients receive the same emergency care and medications in a freestanding ER as a traditional hospital-based ER. Specialists typically see these patients at cardiac care unit after the cath lab or neuro ICU and after transfer to these units, not in the ER. So if there is, there is a patient that is being, that does have these, has a heart attack or stroke, they are not seen by a specialist until after they've had these tests run. The appropriate care is, is the appropriate medical setting. MUC is an appropriate setting for emergency care. MUC FSEDs is providing citizens of Wheat Ridge with an alternative to the only access to emergency care that they have known for 110 years and it's, it's, it's time for the citizens of this city to have that, the ability to choose. And then it says FSEDs that charge full-service ER prices that do not provide the full spectrum of care, provide care for every person and that are not located within blocks of full-service ER and ER is not appropriate utilization of healthcare services. MUC provides a full spectrum of services found in traditional hospital-based ERs and are more efficiently utilized with less resources and a more controlled environment for the same cost of a full-service hospital. Our data shows patients are seen more expeditiously, treated with a decision for time follow-up or admissions made sooner, which provides for better outcomes. Door to balloon, door to knife, door to definitive treatment, all happen faster in a traditional over, do not happen faster in a traditional overcrowded, resource-impressed, traditional hospital setting. MUC submits to the citizens of Wheat Ridge should be, this should be the opportunity to decide what appropriate use of their health service consumption is, not Lutheran Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to come forward and speak anymore on the subject before I close it?
No.
No? No rebuttal? Okay. Nah, no more rebuttal. I will close the, if no one wishes, I will close the public hearing since there's no one left. Okay.
Commissioner.
What's that?
If I haven't spoken yet, I speak.
Yes.
If you haven't.
Yes, someone new. If you haven't spoken yet, you can please come forward. I will open the public hearing back up.
Hi, I'm Jackie Weinhold and my address is 6142 Dunraven Road in Golden. You know, I guess what they had to say, my question is, as just a normal citizen, so if I have a heart attack and/or a stroke and go into their emergency center, am I going to be getting care past initial treatment? Or am I going to be getting transferred back to a hospital like Lutheran to have a cath procedure done? I mean, the answer is you're not going to have that done at the freestanding ER. So they say their times are quicker. So you're going in there and you're seeing a doctor quicker, but ultimately that patient needs to end up at an acute care facility with cardiologists, with neurologists to get the procedure done. So I think it's very misleading to have an emergency room there saying they can treat heart attack patients, saying they can treat. heart attack patients, saying they can treat stroke patients, as people walk in there, and yes, they're stabilized, but then they are getting transferred back out to another hospital to get the actual care that's going to save their life. So I think it's very misleading and can be very confusing for people of Wheat Ridge trying to understand where to go, to what facility, for what kind of care, especially since they're saying, "We will treat the heart attacks and strokes." It's just, it's not true. They're not seeing them through the complete continuum of care. So that's my concern.
Thank you. I will now, there's one more that hasn't spoken. Did you, sir, wish to speak? Okay. I will now close the public forum. Thank you.
Commissioner, I could just clarify. I know the commission has heard a lot of comments this evening on very specific facts and figures and business operational characteristics of a potential land use, one of many that would be permitted in this zone district. And I just want to clarify for you and for everybody, what isn't, isn't a part of your jurisdiction in hearing this specific type of land use application. It's not a planned development, so we're not looking, and not really able to look at the merits of specific types of land uses. We're looking at the merit of the zone district in general relative to its surroundings, consistent with those criteria. Zoning doesn't regulate the market, doesn't regulate medical facilities. That's, that's done at a state level, while you certainly heard some legitimate concerns and responses on both sides of the issue. I would recommend that you focus, again, on the merits of this zoning and this location. This type of land use is, would be permitted in a variety of other areas in the city, not in this particular property because it's not zoned appropriately. But they could go, you know, it's, it's not a policy question of whether freestanding emergency rooms should be allowed in Wheat Ridge in general. It's a policy question of whether the MUC zoning is appropriate in this location of the city. So try and focus your analysis on that, having heard, again, legitimate comments on, on all sorts of angles of this application, and that's what you're here for tonight.
Okay, I would, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Bowden?
So, and how does, I understand exactly what you said, that we're making our decision based on the zoning and what's around, but how does the representatives from Lutheran, what they had to say, affect the statement that this does not positively affect the community or adversely affect the community?
You mean, just in general, in terms of this being a, a land use that shouldn't be allowed in Wheat Ridge?
Yeah, because part of the, the report says that this will not adversely affect the public welfare. I understand this, this, this letter was submitted, found out the 11th hour today, so probably none of those considerations were-
Sure. So, I mean, for any, you're a quasi-judicial body, this is a quasi-judicial case. If it was black and white, we probably wouldn't be here. So zone change criteria are subjective. The criteria is that it protects, promotes the health, safety, and welfare of a community, which can be interpreted a million different ways, and does not significantly adversely affect the area. So staff's presented an opinion that an MUC zoning in this particular site doesn't have a negative effect, but it's obviously a subjective criteria that's open to interpretation. Yeah, I'm not, we don't pretend to be medical professionals, you know, at this table, but again, that's not the policy decision that we're looking at.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilson?
No questions.
I would entertain a motion.
Enter a motion here, Commissioner. I would like to recommend denial of case number WZ-15-07, request for approval of a zone change from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial for property located at 3090 Wadsworth Boulevard for the following reasons.
Excuse me, it was 3790, isn't it? 37-
3790.
I think you said 30.
Sorry. 3790 Wadsworth Boulevard. The proposed zone change is unnecessary because sufficient existing MUC zoning exists in the immediately adjacent areas to this site. It will negatively, it may negatively impact the public health, safety, and welfare of the community as discussed. And the proposed zone change is not compatible with the surrounding area, that being the church, the adjacent properties which probably will be in the future subjected to zoning change requests. And no certificate of need is needed for new hospitals in Colorado. I think that's an oversight, and I don't see a need for this use. And I don't see a need to change the zoning, especially when there is a huge amount of MUC existing. And to carve out this one little piece, I think it can stay M-U-N without any adverse effects on the neighborhood.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Motion passed, four to one.
And for the record, for the record, this is a recommendation. It will be forwarded to city council, and they will have the ultimate authority to make the decision on the zone change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other items?
No other items. We do expect to have a planning commission meeting for October 15th, so you can mark your calendars for that.
One other item, one of our newer staff members is sitting in the audience, Zach Wallace. Welcome, Zach. We now have full, a full staff of planners, which is great.
Okay, I'd like to, if there's, there's not anything else, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion passed, five to zero.